All right, for the next item, we have an update on our strategic plan, Destination 2025. And as you know, we've promised the board and our public periodic updates. We have a large strategic plan, a lot of goals there that we are not losing sight of, and we continue to work towards achieving. And so while this update does not cover progress on the entire plan, it does cover a few goals. And so we look forward to being able to share some updates on our progress here. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Hinton, and I know she's joined by some other presenters.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. This afternoon, we'd like to provide you with an update on the Division's Strategic Plan, Destination 2025. The strategic plan includes six strategic goals grounded in the Division's four cornerstones. Additionally, equity is the lens through which we view all components of the plan, and we have four areas of equity focus. Each strategic goal is supported through implementation drivers, which are the focused action steps taken to achieve our longer-term goals. Implementation drivers have been outlined in the plan with target completion dates through 2025. The implementation of the drivers is achieved through a targeted professional development plan. The roadmap provides the three professional learning focus areas for leaders. Professional learning is provided both by Henrico leaders and by experts in the field in venues such as principal meetings, quarterly meetings, and designated professional learning days. At this time, we'd like to provide you with updates related to four of the implementation drivers with target completion dates of 2021. First, Ms. Bostain and Mr. Maddox will provide an update on the Instructional Technology Plan, followed by Mr. DeSault and Ms. Sealy to share the Division's progress in developing a teaching and learning framework and curriculum alignment. And Dr. Baker and Ms. Stewart will then share information on how the Division is working to grow and support teacher leaders.
Good afternoon. Our presentation today will provide an update on how innovation and the purposeful use of technology supports learning, teaching, leading, and infrastructure. The first area we will provide an update on is learning, where highlights include our curriculum that was transformed over the last two years to a fully digital platform, allowing equitable access to a wide variety of resources for learning. This includes digital tools that are available through our HCPS Clever Portal that provide all stakeholders with the opportunity to access real-time performance data that empowers learner agency and the integration of the Virginia Department of Education's Computer Science and Digital Learning Integration Standards. These standards include the safe and ethical use of technology, where our efforts in Henrico were recognized by Common Sense Education, a national nonprofit organization for our continued commitment to providing safe and innovative learning spaces for our students to thrive as they harness the power of technology for learning and life. Our next category is teaching, where we focus on developing and employing innovative strategies and practices through HCPSU, our online professional learning platform that was recognized by the National Association of Counties, or NACO, and providing every school with an innovative learning coach, or ILC, to provide job-embedded professional learning, as well as instructional technology support for students, staff, and families to ensure they have what they need for success. And finally, leading, where highlights include support for the U.S. Department of Education's Go Open Initiative, designed to increase equity, empower teachers, and keep content relevant and high-quality through our state-level participation with the Virginia Department of Education, where Henrico Schools is proud to help lead the way with the state's Go Open Virginia Initiative, a growing community working together to help personalize learning and address the learning goals of the profile of a Virginia graduate. Our innovative learning leadership practices have also been recognized by the State Board through our selection and participation in the Virginia Is For Learners Innovation Network for the second year in a row. This is an innovative statewide professional learning network that is also aligned to the critical competencies of the profile of a Virginia graduate, and we are honored to be one of the selected districts to help lead the way. And finally, our last highlight as it relates to leading is our recognition by the State Board of Education as a school division of innovation for designing and implementing practices and structures that improve student learning and promote college and career readiness and good citizenship. We are proud to share that we, along with 14 other Virginia school divisions, were the first out of 132 school divisions across the state to earn this designation. Our work with this designation will continue over the course of this school year, where we will focus on learner agency, portfolios, and performance assessments. And we know that none of this would be possible without the infrastructure and design of safe learning spaces for our students. At this time, Brian Maddox, our Director of Technology, will provide an update on our infrastructure for digital learning.
Good afternoon. So to best support and empower learning for all of our students, we must provide the best technologies. The most fundamental technology component for learning is the device in the hands of students, teachers, and staff. This includes iPads, Chromebooks, and laptops in the Division. And since March of 2020, every student from pre-K all the way to grade 12 has a dedicated HCPS device to learn with. Next is technology in the classroom, such as panels. Another exciting project underway in recent months is the purchase of over 1,400 Promethium panels for classrooms at all grade levels and in every school or program site. This is the first significant effort in many years to address deficiencies in display technologies in about 35% of our classrooms this year. This first phase of the project is planned to run through the beginning of 2022, with ongoing efforts continuing for the years to come. And of course, for the devices and the panels and all the other technologies to work, we need a really strong, stable, secure network. And of course, HCPS continues to invest millions of dollars every six to seven years to refresh all school-based network cabling and infrastructure. Every once network involves continuous performance monitoring and bandwidth, adjustments to meet learning needs as they change and evolve. Also, the school division is committed to continue to provide internet access solutions for families in need to bridge the digital divide for anytime, anywhere learning. And of course, behind every application or system that we have used for learning or division operations, there's the related data center hardware that must be properly configured, tuned, and managed. The data center is typically refreshed every seven years and is next scheduled for a refresh around 2025. The last day of refresh of the HCPS data center was in 2018. Technology continues to explore cloud offerings versus hosting in the data center to provide solutions that are optimized, flexible, secure, and the most cost-effective. And of course, very important is maintaining a secure learning environment with minimal interruptions to student learning or division operations. And this is a fine line to walk and is a critical focus of the Technology Department. Some division examples of these efforts are always-on content web filtering to ensure a safe learning experience, email security solutions to block malware and attempts to infiltrate HCPS accounts and systems, and also third-party engagements with cybersecurity experts to probe technology infrastructure and systems to make sure they're secure. And for example, last year in August and September, the FBI reported that K-12 school divisions accounted for almost 60% of all reported ransomware events. And given this, technology continues to work diligently to harden the HCPS technical landscape and to secure the HCPS data center for learning anywhere, anytime. And of course, last but not least, we have the investment technology by the Division. There will always be a need to provide in-person help when something doesn't work as it should. The Technology Department is continually focused to be customer-centric and dedicated to the student and employee learning experience using the best practices and processes. And now I'd like to hand it over to Mr. Michael DeSault, Director of Teaching Learning Innovation, to share an update on the instructional model.
In order for students to be successful, Henrico must have a common vision for teaching and learning. This commitment must include an aligned curriculum, instructional model, and ongoing professional learning. The Division learning continuously aligns curriculum each calendar year, and it is a repeating process. Ongoing professional learning informs and supports staff on instructional best practices. This past year, we developed the final piece of the puzzle, the instructional model. Each of the documents and models you see here have been important pieces to help shape and define our instructional puzzle to ensure Henrico's best practices evolved over time to meet the needs of the students and our staff. And while we know all these components and models are critical, our Destination 2025 focus has been to funnel them into a singular instructional model. This past year, collaboration between the Division of School Leadership and the Division of Learning intentionally pulled these best practices together into an instructional model that succinctly identified our core beliefs. Here you see the final result, Henrico's instructional model to drive our progress towards Destination 2025. While the instructional model only makes up one portion of the teaching and learning framework, it truly is the anchor for supporting our instructional staff. While we know our ultimate goal is for students to be life-ready when they leave our classrooms, we selected a graduation cap to remind us of our important target. The base of the cap serves as the foundational support needed to ensure every HCPS student will be successful. Henrico understands a learner-centered community that meets the social, emotional, and cultural needs of our students is a key to our model. Design, deliver, and assess practices are put together in the form of puzzle pieces to allow for varying starting points within the model. This gives our teachers the opportunity to reflect and respond as they move through the various components of the model to meet the individual needs of our students. At this time, I will turn the presentation over to Ms. Anne Marie Sealy, Director of School Quality, who will discuss our finalized instructional best practices.
Now that the instructional model has a structure with defined elements, we are turning our attention to articulating the research-based best practices necessary to implement the elements. Here you see the final structure of our collective efforts to align best practices pulled from various HCPS documents. In June 2021, we sought feedback from all instructional staff around the best practices that should be emphasized within the instructional model. At the August quarterly meeting, administrators provided insight and feedback on the implementation plan and timeline. As we head into the 21-22 school year, the Division of Learning will build the resources, documents, and examples associated with these elements. The instructional model infrastructure will continue to be developed through the input of our teachers and administrators. Their input, in conjunction with the Division of Learning, will ultimately provide clarity in defining the best practices of design, deliver, and assess within the learner-centered community for the HCPS classroom. At this time, I will turn the presentation over to Drew Baker and Angela Stewart in Professional Learning and Leadership, who will discuss recruiting and retaining a diverse workforce.
Hello, everyone. I'm Dr. Drew Baker. On behalf of the Department of Professional Learning and Leadership and Human Resources, we will be giving an overview of some of the dynamic programs in which we engage to help retain and recruit the highest-quality educators available. The first way that we support teacher career advancements is through the National Board Certification Program. Our National Board class this past year in 2021 was the sixth-largest in the nation and the first-largest in Virginia. We're excited because we had four times more teachers of color in the cohort from 2017 to 2021. And 92% of HCPS National Board teachers agree that, quote, "I am more likely to remain in the teaching profession now that I have completed National Board Certification." Our cohorts are teacher-led, which means each one is led by a trained HCPS teacher facilitator. They have monthly meetings to support National Board candidates. This provides new teacher leadership opportunities for people who want to be these facilitators. And our pass rate this past year was 91%, compared to the national rate, which hovers right around 60%. Another way we innovate in retaining high-quality professionals is through the Aspiring Leader Academy. The Aspiring Leader Academy, also known as ALA, is a year-long professional learning series that provides authentic leadership experiences facilitated by Henrico leaders and is aligned to the professional standards for educational leaders and the teacher-leader model standards. The purpose of ALA is to ensure leadership capacity by recruiting, hiring, developing, empowering, and retaining teacher leaders and our next school leaders. Each cohort has approximately 25 members who participate in one of two available tracks, Teacher Leader Track for teachers who wish to have leadership experience while remaining in the classroom, and an Administration Track for teachers who wish to become school administrators. We also partner with local universities to help both retain and recruit the best teachers possible. HCPS partners with colleges and universities in multiple ways to enhance recruitment and retention. A few examples are we work with the VCU Minority Educator Recruitment, Retention, and Equity Center. We have mentoring efforts for students of local colleges and universities, particularly in historically black colleges and universities, to include mock interviews, roundtables, and other things to build their skills. And then we have implementation of various grant opportunities to facilitate attainment of licensure and professional development. And now I will pass off the microphone to my colleague, Ms. Angela Stewart.
Thank you. To support new teachers and retain experienced teachers, we maintain a dynamic teacher mentoring program. The teacher mentoring program is designed to provide support to beginning teachers, starting with induction, and continuing support throughout their professional teaching years in Henrico County Public Schools. The teacher mentoring program is comprised of the assignment of a mentor for beginning teachers, weekly, monthly, and whole-division workshops, mid-year new teacher conference, and support at the classroom, school, and division level. Our instructional coaching program seeks to support those teachers already in the classroom and support them in meeting the needs of students they serve. HCPS takes a strengths-based approach to instructional coaching that is job-embedded, non-evaluative, and student-centered. The coaching program includes a unified coaching model, instructional coach performance standards, and ongoing professional support for all coaches. Finally, building on our university partnerships, we also help lead the way with residency programs to reimagine how new teachers enter the profession, ready to make an impact with students. Through the Richmond Residency Program in partnership with Virginia Commonwealth University and the School-Based Teacher Education Program, also known as STEP, in collaboration with the University of Richmond. The teacher residency program recruits, trains, and places high-quality educators in divisions across the region through the Virginia Commonwealth University Partnership. It is particularly focused on developing teachers for high needs, urban, and hard-to-staff classrooms, and includes a full master's coursework plus a year-long residency. The STEP program is an exclusive partnership between Henrico and the University of Richmond with a focus on staffing and training for schools with high teacher turnover rates. This program also includes a full year of paid residency. Both programs show 100% job placement rate for educators in Henrico schools. And now I'd like to pass the microphone to Dr. Tinton to talk about our performance metrics.
So as you can see, work is well underway to ensure our students are educated by a high-quality workforce and have life-ready experiences leading to college or career readiness. As we implement the plan drivers, we monitor our progress through key performance metrics. We are excited to share that we have recently obtained iDashboards, a data visualization platform that will allow us to communicate our results in a user-friendly way to our community. The data dashboard will include aggregate division-level data for each of our metrics and will be dynamically displayed through interactive charts and graphs embedded within the Destination 2025 page of our website. In our recent survey, 77% of families reported an awareness of our strategic plan. And through this new tool, we hope to increase awareness and engagement with our community. In our December update, we'll be able to share the dashboard with the available data at that time. Destination 2025 guides the Division's improvement efforts. This has been evident through the bi-monthly work session presentations, which connect each presentation topic to one of our six goals. This timeline shows when data for each metric will be shared and aligns with the presentation updates typically given during each month. After presenting the data to the board, the new data dashboard will be updated with the most current information for the public. We will continue to provide specific strategic plan updates three times per year to include progress updates on the implementation drivers and metrics. Due to the limited data from the last school year, we will convene the Strategic Plan Steering Committee in February to review our progress and collect input on updates needed. For this month, Ms. Berry will be providing data related to school safety, which aligns with our strategic goals of fostering an inclusive, safe, and supportive climate and providing equitable and secure physical learning environments.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. Today I will share an update regarding our safety metrics to include the percentage of schools that exceeded expectations on their most recent comprehensive safety audit this past school year and give you an introduction to our threat assessment model and how we plan to measure growth in the upcoming school year. The schools that received their comprehensive audit this past year were initially scheduled for the 2019-2020 school year. But due to COVID, we had to push those remaining nine schools to the 2020-2021 school year. I am happy to report that of all nine schools audited last year, they all received the highest possible rating of exceeds expectation. This is the third year in a row during the comprehensive safety audit process that all audited schools received this rating. Of the nine schools receiving an overall exceeds expectations, four of those schools exceeded expectations in all areas in which they were audited. These schools went through a completely different way of auditing, but they adapted and were able to highlight all areas of focus effortlessly. Regardless of how we were educating students, they ensured safety was a top priority and truly cultivated the climate of safety. In the fall of 2019, we initiated the utilization of the HCPS Threat Assessment Model. We worked with multiple different stakeholders to ensure we had developed a collaborative process for targeted violence intervention specifically for our schools. Our vision was to support the HCPS cornerstone of safety and wellness to develop, maintain, and utilize a meaningful threat assessment process to identify and intercept targeted violence while promoting a climate of safe and healthy schools through prevention, intervention, and support. The HCPS Threat Assessment process includes three levels of threat assessment teams, known as TATs. The school-based TAT is the threat assessment team for each HCPS campus and learning center. There is also a divisional TAT, which provides oversight to the school-based teams. And each member is a resource for all threat assessment members regarding any areas of concern. The third level is the threat assessment team for the county of Henrico. The county's community threat assessment team provides the same intervention services to individuals and the community that the TAT is providing in the schools. After months of training with staff, we hit the ground running in September 2019. But then came COVID, which forced us to pause and recalculate how this process was going to work now that students were not in the building. We developed guidance for school TATs to refer to for maintaining cases and worked closely with our community partners for support and assistance with providing intervention resources and services. With students returning to the buildings for the 2021-2022 school year, we consider this to be our baseline year. Going into this school year with our new game perspective, we feel confident we will be able to collect data that is an accurate representation of our model. We want to be able to show the growth individuals have made through an intervention-driven process, and I look forward to sharing this data with you in the coming school year. I will now turn it back over to Tiffany.
Thank you. And that concludes all of our updates. We are happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hinton. I'm going to start with Mrs. Atkins.
Thank you, everyone, for that update. I do have a few questions. The first one is just more a learning opportunity for me. If you could share more details or information around the internet access solutions that was shared?
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm curious as to, in the update, could you share a little bit more on what those updates are, particularly around the internet solutions?
So we're continuing to provide hotspots to families that currently have them. And the plan for this year is there's also the offering of Comcast Internet Essentials, which is for families in need, so we're promoting that with families as well. In addition, we're sharing with families, there's a federal program called the Emergency Broadband Benefit, or the EBB, which provides $50 a month for families for internet access at home for remote learning. So we're sharing that with families, too, so they can apply for that if they need it. So those are the offerings currently today.
Thank you. Some ideas that were shared with me, I know a representative of Google are exploring using Google Blimps to go across different school divisions. It's a pilot, and that they're using to be able to use that resource in this pilot effort for several different school systems. And I'll send you more information about that. So particularly, of course, in Verona Sands and Holland Springs, where we have those pockets that you just can't get the consistent access in. So just wanted to share that with you. Also, wanted to know if there was conversations around acquiring a bus or using an old bus to push out internet services, so almost like a mobile internet bus. Is that something that has been discussed?
We have discussed that currently. We aren't pursuing something like that, but we have discussed in the past, and we'll continue to look at options like that as it makes sense.
Fantastic. Thank you for that. And also, again, this is another learning opportunity for me, and I'll also share some ideas that I've received and share, if it's appropriate, around the data center solutions. Do you mind sharing more information on exactly what solutions are involved here?
Of course, so we currently have our on-prem data center, which is a partnership with Henrico County. So they renovated their data center back in 2017, and we joined them in 2018. So we continue to have the majority of our offerings out of that primary physical data center. But we're also looking at cloud offerings. So we currently have, of course, Google Workspace for staff and students, which is in the cloud. Our Microsoft email and other offerings is in the cloud, that's Office 365. We also have, taking advantage of Microsoft Azure, which is what it's called, which is hosting of different types of solutions. In addition to a lot of the other, they call it software-as-a-service offerings, which is Talendet, for example, is one of those cloud offerings. Safe Schools is another one. So we continue to explore those offerings for applications as they make sense. And then for the data center, with the next refresh in 2025, we continue to explore cloud hosting solutions to where, as opposed to investing in infrastructure in a physical data center at the administration location off of Param Road with the county, we're exploring hosting infrastructure in the cloud using Microsoft Azure or Amazon Web Services. So we continue to explore those offerings as they make sense and if they're cost-effective for the long term.
Thank you for that. I'm just taking notes as you're speaking so that I can capture it. Thank you for that. Those are great, great responses to that question. I'm really delighted to hear that those conversations are happening and that we're trying to continue to evolve in innovation, because that's exactly what you're talking about here. So I'm very delighted to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then I also had a question around, you know, one of our cornerstones is relationships. And as you flow through the presentation, I was trying to tie in, how do we also tie in in our strategic plan and looking for some solutions or answers around family engagement? I'm not sure who the appropriate person would be to answer that, but wondering how relationship building is built into your update?
I think I can speak to some of this. I see, please continue to come forward, I'll just start to answer. We really just pulled out some of our goals for this presentation specifically around academic excellence in recruiting and rotating, and certainly relationships is a cornerstone built in throughout. But some future updates will feature some of those specific areas where we're working to build relationships, because you're absolutely right. That's key to our strategic plan work. But Mrs. Cole Johnson, I'll turn it over to you to add any insights there.
Absolutely. Just to add, I know that we're scheduled to be here for, I think, the December school board meeting, so we'll be providing some specific updates. I know Mac and I will be here with Dr. Hinton to do that later on in the year.
Thank you for providing that update, because I wasn't aware that we were only touching on a few. And so, you know, family engagement and community engagement has to be weaved in every single part. And so I'm pleased to hear that we will be receiving an update on that. So thank you so much. And that concludes my questions and thoughts.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Atkins. Ms. Ogden.
Thank you. First of all, wealth of information, and I really do appreciate it. I think anytime we have a survey that shows 77% of our families are aware of the strategic plan, what we're doing with it, and have engaged with the strategic plan, we're doing something right, because, you know, I'm not the youngest person in the room, so I can tell you, usually strategic plans sit on a shelf and collect dust. And the fact that this is a living, breathing thing, that we're using it to guide the work, I think is great. And that our constituents know about it and are involved in it, I think is just, is great progress. But it's, to me, this represents, it's a summary of the really great intense work that's going on. I think that we're really hitting the mark on getting this work done, and it's purposeful and has meaning. But it also shows me well-planned, robust learning experiences, and that's what it's all about. I was also really glad to see a focus on teacher retention and recruiting a diverse staff. We have a diverse county. We need to have a diverse staff. I know we're doing what we can, but having that as part of our strategic plan, I think is great. But Mr. DeSault, I'm going to put you on the spot for just a second. The teacher in me cannot help but look at the instructional model. And just if you could explain just a little bit of how we're taking our instructional model from the deeper learning graph that we're all used to seeing now? And I take, has this morphed into a new format? Or are we still using the deeper learning model graph and how those two fit together?
But that's a great question. And that was one of the starting points that we had this year as we started collecting stakeholder feedback. Some of the feedback was we had a variety of models, all great practices in their individual silos, but they needed to kind of come together and mesh in a way that made sense to teachers. And then, of course, seeing the results with students. So as we purposefully looked at the Crem model, the Henrico learner profile, the deeper learning model, we realized all of those had tenants in our design, deliver, and assess model. And almost to the point Ms. Atkins brought up earlier, that learner-centered community, that was intentional. We know that our kids come to us with various lived experiences, and they need to be challenged in certain ways. So we knew that was the underpinning of all. And as we teased out the various components, we saw a good deal of overlap. And to be able to have a succinct model that really teased out these best practices, we wanted to kind of line them all up together and see where those overlaps were and bring them together in a way that made the most sense. So when Ms. Sealy had up there the best practices, that is the result of almost a year's worth of reviewing input back out for review and getting it to the point where we feel like we have capsulated best practices in the deeper learning model, learner profile, and such in a way that teachers can design, deliver, and assess.
Well, and to me, it's sort of right there in one spot. We can look, when I'm preparing a lesson, when I'm working on a project-based thing for my kids, whatever, am I following this? Am I checking these boxes? And it's sort of a way for a teacher, it's sort of a check and balance sort of thing. I want to be sure that I'm doing these things. I'm hitting these goals for my students and from beginning to end, which I think is great. But it also informs our parents a level of expectation, which I think they need. So I appreciate that. But I also will echo what you said, it's student-centered. It is, and having graduation cap, that's a continuation of that theme. But focusing on the five Cs, especially the critical thinking, and making that higher level learning and thinking is where we want to go. We want to raise the bar and not lower it. But anyway, thank you so much for all the information. That's great. I appreciate it.
Is that Ms. Ogden?
Mm-hmm. I'm done.
Thank you so much, Madam Mishay.
Thank you so much. I have a kind of a handful of questions. I have a lot of meat to them. But before I get to that, can we go to the slide that has the reporting timeline, just for some clarity for my sake? Okay. So Dr. Hinton, under November, it says advanced course enrollment suspension. Please tell me those are two separate items.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, we have separate metrics in our strategic plan. One is specifically around getting more of our students involved in advanced coursework. And that really fits along with our typical presentation we do at that time of year with AP, SAT, and ACT data. And then there's also a metric in our strategic plan looking at suspensions, particularly in light of an equity index and looking at that discipline personality.
I just, for a moment, mistakenly read it as all one item and about fell out of my chair. And like, how did I miss this? So, okay, so it's two separate items. Okay, I'm good on that. All right. Thank you for that point of clarification. I'll just go in the order of the presentation, if that's okay. Mr. Maddox, first, I want to thank you for all of your team's work. I mean, just tremendous work, especially in the last 18 months. I participated in a focus group yesterday with a dozen school board members from all over the country. And many of the divisions were talking about how they had just bought devices for the first time using relief monies. And they were so concerned to figure out how they were going to replace an entire division of infrastructure and devices on the same cycle and that it was just going to, it just wasn't sustainable and it was going to be impossible. And so the forethought of your department on how to break it down into different cycles for devices and infrastructure, I think that's really what gives us a sustainable solution here in Henrico that is so important. Just one question for you. You mentioned hotspots. Are families who had hotspots last year, did they turn those back in? Or did they keep them to use for this year?
So the families that received a hotspot still have it. So we did not collect those. So they're still providing service today if they need it.
Thank you. I guess that's what I wanted to know. So that way, if there was some sort of emergency with a student needing to quickly pivot to distance learning because of quarantine, that infrastructure would be there.
Correct.
Thank you so much. Ms. Bostain, it is great to see you as we talk about kind of our access to technology instruction. And you talked so beautifully about the Clever app that we use. I know that there are a lot of additional resources for Clever that don't necessarily show up on a child's page and even in the search bar, don't show up. So I think one great example is Dr. Cashwell shared with the board in response to conversations at the last board meeting, utilizing Typing Club for our students and being able to do that. So I, you know, searched in Clever, you know, Typing Club, just as an example, and it didn't populate into Clever. And I know there's some other resources like that as well. So kind of, what's the, I guess, what's the barrier to get from the resources we subscribe to, to getting to, that aren't accessible to the Clever page? If that made sense at all?
Absolutely, it does. And that is a great point of feedback and something centrally. We have a team that supports our Clever dashboard, and it's a collaborative effort between Mr. Maddox's shop and us over in Teaching, Learning, and Innovation. And through the work of our ILCs and our TSTs in the field, we have a reporting feature so that that can be shared back with us, and we can explore and investigate why that resource is not showing up. I'm also pleased to share with the board that this year we will be, we're ending our exploration phase, and we will be implementing Clever analytics, where in addition to the resources that we do provision in Clever, we're actually going to be able to see the other resources that our students and schools are engaging in, collecting data on that, and making informed decisions from there.
Thank you so much. I know it's a balance between overwhelming with so many icons that you can't find stuff and open access. So thank you for your continued work there. Dr. Baker, I think this is the first time I've gotten to, like, actually call you Dr. Baker. I know it's not, but so new, but it feels good to say it. So congratulations.
Thanks.
As we look at our, you know, I think the education sector for a long time has had a challenge in staffing, both recruiting and retaining. Now nationally, we have, across all sectors or most sectors, a challenge with staffing. And then this year, we almost need more staff to pull off. And so, you know, it's kind of the trifecta of hard in terms of staffing. And I think as we move forward, we're going to continue to need to be creative with how we recruit and retain. And so this doesn't just pertain to you, but I think the whole kind of HR structure in general, I would really love to see us, in being creative, really look into creating a structure around job sharing. There are some positions it lends itself more easily to, like secondary and secondary instruction. Other jobs, it's a little more, you know, challenging for. But I think we lose so many of our really passionate teachers in that, like, five-to-10-year frame that perhaps a job-sharing opportunity would create more life balance for them and let us keep those employees in a part-time fashion. And then I think we're more likely for those part-time employees to then, at some point, return to full time as well in terms of retain, not just retaining, but retaining some of our most passionate educators and really being creative with solutions. And I think we're just going to have to continue to get more creative as the teacher shortage is unfortunately not coming to an end. And I love that, you said the ALA has two tracks, one for administration and one for teaching, correct?
And actually, we have some good news on that, which I can have Dr. Weston come up, because we actually have some updates on ALA to even differentiate it even further.
So this is, this year will begin our fifth cohort of ALA. This started as a part of the Wallace Foundation grant that we partnered with Virginia State University five years ago. For this year, we actually are adding a third track to ALA, and that will be our new leader track. So anyone who has not previously participated in ALA as a teacher leader, a new assistant principal, or a new associate principal, will join ALA to have that year-long experience.
Great, thank you. And I think it's, I just want to reiterate it. It's so important, I think, to have the track to build leaders within the classroom and to build leaders into administration. I was at the pool this weekend, last weekend at the pool, talking, you know, and some teachers were talking to me. And one of them has been with the county for, gosh, probably two decades, has, you know, a department chair, a lot of instructional leadership in her building. And she was sharing with me that people said, "Well, why don't you move into administration?" And she goes, "Because that's not where my passion is, right? That's not where I feel like I'm best serving kids." You know, and so teachers like this, that whose roots are in the classroom, and that's where they want to stay, still giving them opportunities to grow as leaders and grow in their career without having to leave the classroom and follow the admin track is just so important.
And I will say that Henrico took the lead there. We have modeled our program, again, working with the Wallace Foundations with several of school divisions across the country. We were the only one that had a focus on teachers leading from the classroom. Most only had the succession plan.
And I think that's how we can, that's how we retain teachers in the classroom. And not just in terms of retaining them as our staff, which we also want to do, but retaining great teachers in the classroom for instruction. So thank you for y'all's forethought in that. And then my last question for Ms. Stewart. You spoke a little bit about instructional coaches. And can you just help articulate for me, is this different than ILCs?
The ILC group is actually part of the instructional coaches we have within the division. There's about 156 coaches across five different departments, but they're all working on a unified coaching model.
Okay, so ILCs are a subgroup of the larger instructional coaches.
Correct.
All right, that helps me understand. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Shay. Ms. Concella.
Yes, I don't have many questions. I just appreciate any update on the strategic plan and where we are. As Ms. Ogden said, it is critical and to, especially our organization. And most of the time, it really does get ignored or it's one of the least popular discussions within an organization. So I'm grateful for today. I like seeing partnerships mentioned in so many things we do. I believe in the partnership that supports our students. And as Mrs. Shay spoke quite a bit about, as to our teachers, how to recruit them, how to reward them, how to help them grow is important. And I know our recent hire to help us recruit, retain a more diverse workforce that looks like our students, we're doing that. I have a question, and this might be Dr. Cashwell. Apologies to the presenters. National Board Certification Program, this funding was restored, correct?
That's correct. We were so grateful to the Henrico Education Foundation during the time in which we had to make some budget cuts and freezes during the initial stages of the pandemic. They stepped in to help support that effort. But yes, we continue to fund that effort internally and find it to be a critical part and a great investment when you look at the outcomes that Dr. Baker shared.
Okay, and that's been shared, and that's been shared with staff, so they're aware that the funding is available? Okay, has been restored?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I saw a hand or a peeking. That's a thumbs up and a head nod. That's a yes, an official yes.
Thank you very, thank you very much. As to the dashboard, is this the dashboard for our division? And I'm sure, Dr. Hinton, is this the dashboard to show performance of the division and not individual student performance? Because we reference quite a few dashboards this year.
Yes, we are all about getting organized around our data, right? So we know how much data you're presented as a school board. Our teachers are presented, our families are presented, and of course, trying to make sure we keep things in an organized and understandable format. But yes, the dashboard that Dr. Hinton referred to in this presentation is related to a way we'll provide public transparent metrics related to our strategic plan. We have often presented you all data, and we've found places to put it. But we want to be really clear about how we're tracking our progress and our metrics towards achieving our bold goals in Destination 2025. So that's the dashboard referenced here.
Fantastic. Thank you. That's all I have at this time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Concella. I have two just quick questions. Ms. Bostain, can you come to the mic real quick? Thank you so much for your presentation. On Slide seven, HCPU, HTPSU, the online professional learning platform. Could you tell me more about this? First of all, is it accessible to all HTPS staff, whether full or part-time?
It is accessible to all HTPS staff. And we started in, back in 2019 with our HTPSU effort. So for the last two summers and ongoing throughout the school year, we're using that as our platform to deliver our professional learning.
Thank you. Are there any costs associated with the trainings?
There are not. And I'll let Dr. Baker join me on that, on the professional learning side of this, so I don't misrepresent that component.
Yeah, no, there's no cost. It actually was cost-neutral. We were able to handle it with the manpower that we had. We used it as kind of coming in at the beginning to just address the need of COVID, because we had more professional learning we had to deliver on the fly last summer. Obviously, we had so many coming in, Summer of 2020, needing professional learning. Once we got the staff, we had such great response to it from like internal surveys and things we were doing, that they ended up, that kind of became our one-stop shop. And it became a place where we can advertise the professional learning. And now we have things like equity, diversity, and opportunity on there. We're doing training for leading teacher teams and PLCs. So beyond COVID, to continue to use this, rather than it being one piece, making it an area where teachers know where to go. So they have that support, so they're willing to stay in the classroom and can help support kids.
No, that's awesome. I really appreciate that, because I didn't want that to be prohibitive in regards to a person's accessibility to the program. And last question on that section is, for some of our professionals with licenses, would HTPSU offer any continuing ed courses that would fulfill those requirements?
Well, on this, at the moment, not yet. Mostly what we have on HTPSU are things that we have offered internally. So we're not doing like the relicensure courses on there, though we do have the Power School Professional Learning Platform. And these are things that we are, you know, working, of course, in collaboration with Human Resources and Licenseure to get those done. But right now, HTPSU is pretty much where the summer professional learning happens and then ongoing PL throughout the year that teachers would be using to support kids in building.
Okay. So what are our efforts in assisting with the continued ed courses to fulfill requirements?
All right, Dr. Weston, just to make sure we get that exactly right.
So all of the courses on HTPSU and all of the professional learning that is provided for staff for staff across the division counts towards their renewal, their relicenser points. So they are able to participate throughout the year, not only at the division level, but also at their school level to obtain the points that they need for relicenser.
No, I appreciate that. Just again, that's very helpful in, you know, us, again, assisting our staff in fulfilling and achieving and becoming everything they can be.
And this first year, we have Power School Professional Learning. It's fully implemented in Henrico County, where teachers can go on in real time and see their progress towards renewal. So they can always look at a transcript and see where they are and what is needed, and we can also recommend specific professional learning opportunities, target different groups.
Thank you, Dr. Weston. I appreciate that.
And Reverend Crippen, I was just gonna add exactly to your point, the design of HCPSU was with our teachers in mind, and to continue to support, to not only provide the multiple professional learning opportunities, but bring our coaching communities, our content together, and have that on-demand access, as well as the seamless process that Dr. Weston just shared.
No, thank you so much, Ms. Bostain. I appreciate that. And, Dr., let me get it straight with Ms. Shea. Dr. Baker sent you there. On Slide 14, Recruiting Retaining Diverse Workforce, I think it's evident more than ever that this pandemic has highlighted the importance of placing such an intentional effort on staying competitive in the market to be able to recruit and retain those critical positions, such as bus drivers, nutrition staff, custodians, educators, counselors, et cetera. Everyone who are critical to making our school division a leader in the region, because we want to be that. One approach you've discussed on recruiting, retaining, rewarding educators is developing pathways for professional learning and micro-credentialement. Outside of educators, could you speak to other efforts that the division is exploring to create creative or non-traditional pathways for recruitment and retention in other areas of our workforce, such as bus drivers, social workers, counselors, that require certain endorsements or license?
I see lots of people making a move, and while they're coming up, I'll speak to some of that. So, you know, certainly for those who might be coming in new to Henrico County into any of those roles you mentioned, we want to make sure we're an attractive employer, not just because it's a great place to work and our salary and our benefits and those sorts of things are competitive, but that we offer professional learning for all of our employees in ongoing ways. So, you know, we heard a lot in this presentation about what's offered for teachers and leaders, but outside of our instructional ranks, we do offer robust professional learning opportunities. And so that's certainly something, I think, sets us apart perhaps from other school divisions. And then, for example, we have a pathway where instructional assistants in our special education classrooms can work towards obtaining a degree in special education through the school division. We've been able to garner interest there and create a pathway and help those folks attain that endorsement. So that'd be one example. I think there are many more that sort of speak to what you've asked, and Mrs. Bolden was coming forward, so I'll let her take that.
And I'll just add one more. One of the things we're exploring for our non-certificated staff are things such as career ladders embedded within their job, and we're working with the county government to do that through our classification compensation system.
No, I appreciate that. We know about salary compression, we know about our career ladders, our intentional efforts, but to Dr. Cashwell's point, I think that is so important for our staff and others in the community to know that we are diligent in our determination to invest in our employees. And being creative and creating those different pathways, I think, is essential, because we do know how competitive the marketplace is. So I look forward to hearing more about that and assisting in any way I can, we can, to make that happen.
Thank you.
No, thank you all. I'm sorry. Thank you all. Dr. Hinton, I just want to say thank you on behalf of the board. Ms. Cancela and others have been so adamant about the strategic plan and the timeline that you have highlighted and illuminated, gives us great direction on what's to come, looking forward with anticipation, expectation, and excitement about that. So thank you so much for your presentation and for all the staff as well. Madam Superintendent?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks again to all of our presenters and those of you who will have an opportunity to present in the future. We look forward to continued updates on this very important work.